If you want to pull up the presentation. And just as a little bit of background, this work was started in. Well, I don't know, Jamie, twenty eight seventeen. So in twenty sixteen, we contacted Gould Evans. You'll need to turn your microphone on Jay with that little green button. In twenty sixteen, we started with a space needs assessment. Conducted by Gould Evans related to our two major facilities here in the downtown area. This building, the old courthouse and the judicial and law enforcement center. Based off of a variety of really intense space needs being felt in in both buildings. And also conversations with district court about some of the limitations related to. Getting. If we were to ever be so fortunate to receive an additional district court judge from the state. And the requirements for that which include courtroom. And we're currently at capacity in courtroom. So that was really some of the impetus behind the space needs study. Some of what you will see in this report and is online in your packet is reference to that material. And then after that, we conducted a master plan with Gould Evans, and this is the result of that work. And I'm going to do my best to let Jay give the most of the presentation, but I am. I may just chime in here and there with some points that. From from just my history on the project. So, thanks, Jay. Robin, I don't think Jay's microphone's on. Hold on, let me see if this. Testing, this is better.
Hello?
Oh, very good.
Okay. Nothing like a smooth start. Okay. Well, there's a lot of information here. So attached in your packet was actually the entire master plan document. What I'm going to show you today or present to you today is an abbreviated version of that. Also attached to your packet was the initial space, space needs assessment. That kind of led up to the thoughts that you're seeing here in the master plan, so. Okay. See if I can manage all this technology. There we go. Doesn't seem to want to put this away. Well, we'll go this way. Basically, this was the table of contents from the needs from the master plan that include obviously the space needs study that was done. I think it's important to reference and look at this because there's a significant amount of meeting frankly that predates me that was. Sorry. That was performed by the group doing the study with all the various departments with within the county. And so that's how they were able to collect all this. So again, very quickly, I'm going to jump through this. Executive summary basically states that in twenty seventeen, the space needs study was complete. And they had identified some pretty significant immediate needs for space within the county. It's probably not a surprise. We have people off singing closets and very, very little meeting room, those kind of things. And so. This is the executive summary to the master plan. I think it's important to dig a little deeper and go beyond that. They tried to summarize it all here. The why, again, in twenty seventeen, the study was complete. And it was identified by going through with each department, identifying their space needs. And looking at those specific needs, the operations of the courthouse, the operations of the historic courthouse. And looking at those. The the design team that did this work identified again, some very, very significant spaced efficiencies. For staff and and the public and operations within the facilities.
I'm going to interrupt you and just can you minimize that?
I have on my screen. These might be mimicking each other. Hold on one sec.
Yep. That's good. And then on this, can you make it a little larger? So it's a little easier to see?
It will be a challenge. This is a PDF. It's not.
That's fine. Scroll it back and forth.
Okay, I may have to adjust on each slide. So apologies if it gets into that. Recommendations from the study, probably the the two biggest ones were these were the spaces that the space requirements that were identified. And that they're saying by the year twenty twenty seven, we would be looking at a need of between sixteen thousand and twenty four thousand additional square feet. To function properly as a county, serve all our all of our constituents. The second thing that was identified in the and probably one of the most important is operations of the J L E. And how. A modern day courthouse would look in terms of operations versus what we have over at the J L E that was constructed in the early seventies. So those are two of the two of the biggest pieces that I think we need to take from this. Bear with me here. Here we go. This is their roadmap of how these projects kind of take life. The master plan you see document here. This is the culmination of the space needs study. We are currently, I would say, in this kind of green bubble area where we're still prioritizing projects. To identify what. What bits of this study may take precedence in terms of priority. But this is just a general discussion then of how the kind of designing construction side of that might fall out. Really, it's very diagrammatic. I do think it's important to think about a master plan document as. A roadmap. You may take a left turn and go see something else this way for a little while and then go back that way. But it's generally trying to get you to the destination and solving the problems that were identified. And so. When we get into some of the future drawings that are shown, you'll see that. They're suggesting phasing, but those phasings may change based on priority. And again, here's a listing of all the meetings that took place with all the groups to kind of gather all this information to justify what what. Is being placed here in the master plan. Again, I think you'll see here that the the key concern for the judges was circulation in the in the courthouse in the J L E. And solving that was kind of a critical piece of of this study. These are some of the images from our current courthouse and the design challenges that are faced. Typically, best practices you'll see on a slide later. The courtroom is the place where many different circulation paths want to touch, but they don't ever want to cross. And you'll you'll see that future diagrams. We have aging technology, some ADA issues associated with. The construction of that facility that would all be resolved as any kind of master plan reconfiguration. Again, these are just additional images of where we're officeing people. You can see in some of these images that we're in very, very small spaces. The building was originally built in the nineteen seventies with a demountable partition system. That at the time, the thought was that was awesome for flexibility. I think the true realities of some of that is that those walls never really move and they have some other challenges in terms of remodeling and. We just do different things differently now. So the building has significant challenges that really became a focal point of this master plan. Then again, the this building, the historic courthouse, I can tell you. I know we have people sitting in closets and storage space. I know we're going through some. Digitizing of information to try and ease some of that, but there are still significant. Significant issues and lack of meeting space. Really, it comes down to this space. In the in the courthouse itself. There are various areas around, but what you'll see is tables and furnitures have been. Inserted into those spaces that don't really that you can see. The picture right there with there's really not room to pull a chair out and get around somebody if you're sitting in the room. So. It's been adaptive reuse. Then also part of the study, we requested that they include and study. Possibilities associated with the facility at. Twelve forty two mass. This is the property that the county owns up here on the corner of Massachusetts and East Thirteenth. And some ideas are surfacing around how we might utilize that and moving forward with the master plan, but those are still, I think. Being baked. This is more of a cover sheet. So this will drill down into the immediate. Facilities that were really looked at in depth at the master plan. So we'll start at the historic courthouse, which is this one. These are plan diagrams generated by the architect based on the square footage is required access to the general public when people are coming in. So that we've got those services up front and the public's not having to go, you know, far back into the facility to access those services. It's not not. Horribly different than you would expect and what you're seeing now. Obviously, this space is not moving. But the treasurer and the clerk, those kind of key upfront public functions kind of remained where they were. Reconfigured but where they were. And we can drill down into these a little later as we go. If you have more questions, but this is an idea of how the architect was suggesting we might. Look at realigning space within the existing courthouse. I think it's important to note that what. The effort here and the challenges associated with the historic structure is you're giving you're given A and B. You really kind of work Z. That's how we got really small conference rooms and some other things. We were adapting to using a historic structure. And adding on to historic structures can become challenging. And so. Finding a way to be efficient within the footprint we we have was a big piece of this. And so you'll see some of that as we go forward.
Before you move on, Jay, I just as a one of the things I think we realized in the space needs study is as in conjunction with basically, we can't increase the footprint of this building. Was that, you know, somebody, we have functions that maybe don't didn't need to stay in this building. So as a part of that spacing analysis, that was really where the genesis to. Having elections leave the historic courthouse came came around and. But I would say even in addition to that, I think what we have seen over time is that. Even functions like the motor vehicle operations, you know, there's no room to expand in that format. And I think particularly with the challenges of COVID, where you've got a number of people in a very small kind of peninsula like. Staging area. It's 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 difficult. So I do think that while elections was the most immediate, but it was difficult to hold. Do all the election prep here to have advanced voting in this location. It's hard for the public to access in terms of parking and ADA access. I think there it's probably true for some other functions that we do besides elections.
So this slide, your basic hello. So this this slide, you're basically looking at what was proposed as a phasing. And this is where I think it's important to look at this document as a roadmap. Phase one might actually want to happen when phase three happens. This is just an initial blush at how. When you have a building that's fully occupied, really the only way to begin and do remodel construction is to kind of move a piece. And then you can fix it and then you move people back in and then you fix this piece. And so this was an initial blush at how. How that might happen if we were integrating all of this kind of sequentially. Again, I think this can adapt and 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 change based on priorities. These were, this was a cost estimate associated with the work that was provided. Now, I think. I think it's important to note, you're seeing a light and a heavy renovation. All of it is renovation. Obviously, there's no new construction here, but. Those numbers were generated in twenty, I think it was twenty twenty. Escalate to twenty twenty one. However, this happened pre. Honestly, I think this was happening pre COVID where before we had disruptions in supply chains, construction's been kind of a crazy thing this year. In terms of what we're seeing for escalation and those kind of things. And so. As part of this, I just would caveat that those numbers. Aren't adjusted for today. That that's that's the big discussion. Again, we can drill down into that later with bigger plan diagrams, but this would move the focus over to the J L E. There were a number of discussions on this project when we were looking at it and how best to add the square footage that was identified as being needed. We looked at everything from expanding on top of the building and adding stories. And we wound up back at the idea of another addition. And we'll get into some of that as we look at these. I think what's important to notice here and this this gets back to the discussion of what is best practice for a for a courthouse facility. And where you see the same colored lines basically right next to each other in the same corridor is is not the ideal solution. If we were building a new one of these today, that's not the way it would be designed. Again, this was constructed, designed and construction seventies and times are just a little different. So a big portion of this study was trying to figure out how to adapt those circulation paths. So it's more appropriate for a for a modern day courthouse. A lot of work went in with the judge judges on this. And what you'll see is. Kind of on the right hand side, you'll see that the public now would have their own circulation path. That's the green line. And the yellow and the red line share a common path to court. And this was done for a variety of reasons in terms of efficiency of using existing. Elevators, circulation paths, integrating it smart into an existing structure. And so a vast improvement. Over what we currently have. Also, on these diagrams, you'll start to see a piece here. This is the this is the portion that we're talking about in terms of an addition. In lieu of it's this portion right here, it would grow out actually towards the historic courthouse instead of going up. A lot of that, a lot of those decisions were predicated on. The mechanical systems that exist on the roof over there that we would be taking out of circulation or at least affecting while we would be adding on a third floor. This option, the architects deemed would allow us to add needed square footage, courtrooms, those kind of things. Such that we have that piece now to move those pieces around in the J L E and. Fix this piece while we've once we've moved out of it kind of thing.
I'd also, and I know there's a graphic later on that shows better what the three court stack would look like that would move here to the west. In addition to that, this would take all the existing courtrooms and create them in a standard size format. It should be hugely helpful. Compared to to what we what we have today for those as well.
And that's what the architect was displaying here in terms of courtroom layouts, most, you know. Best practice courtroom layouts and how we would adapt the courtrooms over there to be and look like these function like these, most importantly. Again, here's the plan diagrams that were generated and you can see the addition that's occurring over here. That allows a stack of of courtrooms to be built while that facility remains fully operational. That's the trick is keeping it running. And again, why I think the choice to move and do an addition. In lieu of trying to build on top. And again, these are just diagrams of where the pieces would move around as part of that puzzle. When it's all when it's all said and done. This would add the seven seventh divisional court that we need. Based on caseload for our judges. Getting that seventh court be critical to reducing load on the other judges and also expediting the judicial process. And so. This was a study done when when the idea came to do the addition, how best to stack those courtrooms. What a what a very basic rudimentary section would look like through those courtrooms if we didn't. And you courtroom stack here coming towards the court. And so architects trying to. Piece through this early and be sure they're being responsible with how that could be integrated. Again, here's your phasing diagram. You'll see the you'll see the red is number one. I think logically, in this case, that is obviously the ideal phase for that to occur because again, it creates that ability for us to move pieces around within the J L E. And remain fully operational. But again, as this. The phasing over here, I think, is a little more straightforward in terms of. Integration of construction and renovation components. So I this to me felt 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 doable and. But obviously, the right priorities are identified here, so. Might not need to go south and north a little bit. I think it's a little more of a straight line. Here's some rough cost estimation that was provided as part of that. You can see the. The new construction numbers there versus renovation, obviously, significant difference in terms of cost per square foot. Again, they're identifying these numbers at twenty twenty five as. Nineteen point, no, those are today's dollars, I think, twenty twenty two dollars of nineteen point five million, I think, again. Hopefully, we're we're kind of coming out of the COVID escalation. But I think as we get a little closer to this and get a little more serious about it, one of the first steps would be to have those numbers. Verified and and reestimated, so. Again, this is a quick site plan that shows all the various pieces. The public would enter now from a new entry that's right here that faces south. The new courtroom stack would be right here. If you can see my cursor. The judiciary would come in through dedicated interest back here and have their circulation kind of on the backside of the court. The public is up in this space, very clean separation of those two, which is important. And then the brig would be expanded to accommodate a full size bus and renovated to. Houses houses those in custody coming for for court.
I'd also add here that in addition to how this cleans up the lines of how the courts would be situated. The district attorney is currently on three floors in that building. This would get the district attorney on one floor. This would expand to the back and really help the brig situation. So the inmate holding in the back of the law enforcement center, which is. Completely insufficient. And so that would allow us to expand that and keep it keep it. And it would be much it would be much improved plus have secure parking. For for our judges.
That brings us to twelve forty two mass. As many of you know, that this building is in the historic environs of South Park. We've been through an exercise on that building. The the northern part of that building, which is this one right here, has been deemed have no historic. Value. This one would be reviewed, any work done under the on the structure would be reviewed under. The environs of South Park. Current thinking. Current best best thinking for that building at this time is that it might act as good swing space as we're doing these two buildings. If we need to get somebody out. And give them a temporary place to live. It's close. It's right, right on the county campus, if you will. So swing space currently is the best idea for this structure. We asked them to look at that as part of this to kind of see what we might be able to do to improve that structure. Find uses, appropriate uses for it.
I'd also add that in addition to the immediate usage could be swing space for the construction that would happen. If it was decided to proceed with the project and do this piece first. But it's important to note that, you know, the county is in lease space downtown that, you know. We could if eventually we could get out of. In addition to additional operations such as conversations around institutional defense, there would be locations for that. So I the space needs study shows us growing and adding to our footprint over the next twenty years and. It would just make sense to maintain a downtown footprint. For expansion of that space.
So the master plan finding basically came up with, obviously, we're looking at doing all three of these in order to accommodate and meet the needs. Identified in the in the space needs study. And so those are kind of the it's a summary of the three really pieces. What you're going to see, I think, here on the way out is just larger images of what you had before. This is the program document that basically generated the square foot needs. There's about eighteen meetings behind each one of these. Here are the larger plan diagrams of what you saw earlier. This is the historic courthouse, third floor. And what the architect would propose as use of these various spaces and how he might modify them. If you get into these and look real close, you'll see there's dashed lines. Those are existing constructions that would be coming out. And then kind of a light in behind. They're doing a lot of the location of furnishings and those kind of things. Here is the space we're standing in currently. And then the second floor, County Commission. Administration office right here. So this is just, this is just an idea of how they might take that program and get it better integrated into the footprint we have. There we are. And then this is looking at the other floors. Level one is on the left and the basement there is on the right. And just. Proposed move this. Again, this is all preliminary, but a suggestion that was provided by the. Design team.
What I would probably add, I don't know that you get to this, Jay, in your conversations about the historic courthouse. A project that's been held in our C I P for a number of years has been to complete the restoration of the exterior of this building. In twenty two thousand and before my time, eight nine was when two thousand seven eight was. Okay, okay, five, two thousand five, two thousand six, the X, the west side exterior was. Tuck pointed, I think, is the correct term and refinish. The stonework was refinished on the west end. Right, right. There's a one spot where you can see the plan had always been, from what I understood when I began doing capital project work here. Was that we were going to do aside at a time and we never got to it. I am. Significantly concerned about some shifting we have seen on the north end of the building and it's pretty evident. And the register of deeds office and Jill's office. In addition to that, we've the lower level, the appraiser's office has had. Some more significant water. It is a limestone basement, so it's porous. So we anticipate that, you know, we're always going to get some water, but from what I understand, there is some waterproofing. That could be done to help help that situation and help preserve the overall integrity of the structure. When we asked the architects about renovation inside the building, they advised to do the exterior first. And get that out of the way, make sure that it's that that part is done. And then we could do this, the interior of the building. I understand Jay and our director of buildings and grounds are talking to architects and. Engineers about how to approach that part project. And bring back a solution for you. It's not easy because there's two pieces. There's the below ground work. And then there would be then the refinishing of the stone. I'm gonna call it that because I don't know what it's really.
Restoration.
Yeah, okay. Of the exterior of the building, fixing the stone. But I will tell you. It's, I mean, Jay's walked me through this. It takes you take each stairway and you move it away from the building. And then you dig down and you waterproof and then you move the stones back. Yeah, that makes me very nervous with a nineteen oh five courthouse, but that's what needs to be done to help protect the structure.
And then in in those meetings, yeah, the basement basement correction, when it was built, they just didn't waterproof whole buildings. That's they just didn't do it. They stacked the stone and then they parked the inside of the wall with almost like a stucco or a plaster, basically, right? And so there is no waterproofing. So any water we have around the building that gets access to that wall really has a. Pretty free path to come on in. And so really, the only answer is to dig down around the building. We're lucky, we're not, our basement is not buried. We're only about five or six feet down in the ground, but that problem proliferates from. It includes getting grading away from the building, so we don't have water running back towards the building. It involves collecting downspouts and getting those downspouts right sized. I think what we're discovering now is we may have very historical, really cool copper gutters and downspouts. But the downspouts may be smaller than they should be to handle the amount of water coming off. So then the gutter gets overrun and it's just coming down the face of the building. So. It's it's civil engineering. It's it's waterproofing that might be civil architectural. There's 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 a number of pieces to it, but the. What Sarah is alluding to is you can see there on the plan on the left as we go around and dig down beside the building those. The two biggest pieces are those historic staircases on the north and on the west. We literally have to be underneath them to waterproof that. And much of that discussion with engineers in the last week or so has been. You're deconstructing that stair and then reconstructing that stair. And so. we're trying to prioritize that basement component to get it right before we spend money on a master plan, fixing the basement up the way it would ideally suit the county so that we're not throwing good money at pad. Okay, this jumps back over to the JLE and again, just bigger plans. You can see how we're starting to integrate all of the the divisional courtrooms and the hearing rooms. You can see that the new stack here is adding those spaces, how the general public would come in, go through appropriate security for a for a courthouse today. Here's the kind of curved face that you see when you look out the windows to the east right there. And how that might integrate into this addition courtroom stack. And again, this was pretty well thought through, partly because they were solving the issue of of how best to get everyone to court. So it, I think these are very well thought-through diagrams here in terms of how they would apply to the building. And then you can see they also provided for us a five-year master plan that would say, okay, immediate need would suggest that this might be what your what the third level would look like, but in the future, a way to potentially to expand might look at be moving the sheriff and EOC out of, out of the JLE and how that opens up and creates space for more more divisional courts. Again, this was just a study that they did.
And I'd say in addition to that, you know, one of the real complexities of that building over there that we've discussed over time is that the third floor of of a building inside of an urban area is not an ideal location for nine-one-one answering. It would be, I prefer it to be in a tornado hardened shelter. And allow space for the generators and all the towers and so and that's service to be not so close to a whole bunch of cars moving around. So it relocating ECC would be a part of that. And ideally, trying to find some location towards the edge of town where it could be hardened and secured would be would be ideal. And so it's not just simply expanding, and that's why I do believe in the long term, it's important for us to get the emergency communication center outside out of the law enforcement center and to into a better location.
Yeah, the facility built in the seventies wasn't designed to any kind of modern standard for storm hardening, so. That being said, that's, that's a lot of it. I think I left this in here because it was worthy of note. They included in the master plan. But now that we do have the Lawrence Police Department moved out and into their new facility, I think. I don't know if you've noticed it, but there's a significant reduction in the number of vehicles out in this parking lot, which is great. And and good, I think it eases eases parking requirements surrounding the whole county complex. But there was a study done by a group previously by the city to restripe, rework this, this parking lot to increase parking. Again, I think this move of the LPD out has kind of softened that, and maybe that's not such a high priority currently. That really, that's, that's, that's all I have to present in terms of a summary. I guess at this point, I will take questions.
Yeah, and and I should have mentioned this at the top of the session, but all of our work sessions are for educational informational purposes only. We don't make any decisions. However, I do think, you know, as we're already thinking about the twenty twenty-three budget and begin planning for some of that that work, you know, I'd like to hear more from the commission, once you've had a chance to digest this about how, what do you think about moving forward? Is there additional information you'd like to see? Are there conversations that we'd need to take part in? What I, what I'd say is that, you know, we have, I think we've got significant amount of the funding in place for the exterior stonework. I don't think I've got all of it just yet, since we're still working on those estimates. But I do think that that's something that we would be able to finance with cash in the county CIP. A project the size of Law Enforcement Center expansion and renovation is outside the bounds of what our cash-funded capital improvement plan could pay for. So I would anticipate that we would need to look for other funding for that. We do have authority inside our existing sales tax to issue debt for that. So it would not necessarily require a tax increase, but it would require the issuance of bonds for for a structure of that size and magnitude. So and and I'm here to answer any questions on that. Jill was also a part of this process for a long time, and we've got a couple department heads here as well that could just provide any insight commissioners might be looking for. You want to stop sharing?
This is Commissioner Portillo. I will say thank you so much for the overview and the presentation. Thank you, Sarah, for the kind of high-level overview of the finances of it all. It does seem like there is a lot of work that we need to do. And so for me, the big question is, how do we go about prioritizing what to do first, what to do second? And kind of the steps in which to take that and hearing about the historic building and how do we make sure that anytime I hear about water coming into a building, it makes me freak out. I recognize limestone is porous. This is one of the beauties that we get with our very important structure here, but I think that to me, that's a very high priority and need, and it sounds like we have that in our CIP funds currently, so that could be a step before we even start thinking about locations for specific offices and what this will mean for where folks will work.
Yes, and obviously, we would, once we have, you know, a plan for the exterior of this building, we'll bring that back to the commission, obviously, for your approval. Yeah, I do think that that's the first step, and I really think we're in process of that. It was part of your CIP. So I, that's been how staff's been proceeding in terms of how to approach the exterior of the building. You know, the other pieces could work. It doesn't all have to be completely sequential, so I I do think it's one of those things that for the commissioners to think about. The addition and how we've really rethought about twelve forty-two mass has, I think it's been challenging. You know, I think we've, we've kind of been all over the board on what we thought that space could do and should do. I I think once we did have the initial evaluation that it really would make financial sense to renovate the north end, you know, well, demolish and rebuild the north end and then restore the south south end sanctuary and but then repurpose it into either meeting space or office space, depending on how it is to be used. That that could be a really helpful piece in this. But I wouldn't want to start something like that without knowing that we wanted to proceed towards a more significant project. And as and as I've had in numerous conversations with the courts administrator and the district court judges, this is so very preliminary, like, like Jay said, this is colored blocks on a piece of paper in terms of space. This is not remotely how everything would be put together and designed. There are dozens of stakeholders engaged in this process, and it will take significant time. So part of what I think we would, a staff-like direction over the next year or so is, you know, is it time to continue those conversations? And what those next steps would be to move us down a path? Or is this something that you want, you know, to wait and and have additional information on?
One of the things that really made my ears perk up when we were talking about the buildings to the south of us is the idea of renovating them for long-term use. But the ability of them to be a swing space as we go through this, because
Correct.
All of this is going to be significant construction. We're going to need that swing space available. A building just to have swing space doesn't make sense. Moving away from having other leases downtown is a long-term thing that I would love to see if we can have space that works for our offices and for our our staff. So I do like the idea of how do we build that into part of the long-term plan. Other thoughts?
This commissioner, Commissioner Reed, um, yeah, I, I also perked up at the thought of utilizing that building. I mean, not to minimize that it's a major renovation, but all things considered, like relatively low-hanging fruit and something that could be utilized, maybe while we still, over the years, kind of chew on what that space should be permanently. But to make it utilitarian now, I would, I would like to see us not be leasing spaces unnecessarily. And I think, you know, my other thoughts are, well, since last year sometime, I think I became aware of the steps on the north side and that, I mean, it's very obvious visually that there's some wear, and so that seems like something we need to prioritize and what happened. And then, you know, in terms of the, I know there's already been a lot of conversations, and to your point, Sarah, just a moment ago, there's going to be a lot more conversations about the JLE building in particular. I think it's such a major renovation and so many considerations. In planning for that, I I will say some of the things I'm interested in, maybe it's been part of the conversations and will continue to be is I I'm interested in making sure that building is useful to the public as possible, right? And so I think about things like having childcare in a courthouse, having been in other larger courthouses and some communities, I mean, that's a really helpful service, and it's an additional service of first. Certainly, but also I think about things like the law library and how it is utilized heavily by those who know about it. But it is not necessarily a well-known or very visible thing. And so I but but childcare is something that's definitely been top of mind, and then also just kind of the idea of a little bit of an info center or a well, I like the idea of a courthouse concierge in that building, just to navigate all the different questions that are most often answered by our court security and deputies that are kind of scattered throughout the building. And they're usually who are fielding questions about which offices do people go to. And also sometimes supporting with a little bit of childcare support in the hallways for families who who don't have those options when coming to court. So I just wanted to mention that and for future conversations, I'm interested in kind of those layers of it, in addition to the circulation of people through that building. What's useful for the public that that's coming to that building, usually without choice?
Yeah. Access and and, you know, how public services was something that we had thought of initially, and I think we would have to continue to explore. That was largely part of the desire to move the trustee or the clerk of the court, the clerk of the court to the front of the building. And and I've had conversations with the clerk, and and he really has a strong passion for really serving as that. You know, wayfinder and that resource for the public and for pro-sailitigants in that process. So moving them to that front door would allow them to provide that, and then the law library, very close to it, right next door, ideally. So that people could use that space as well without even having to enter, then the full, you know, body of the courthouse and all the division chambers is something that we could definitely look at. One of the things that we did explore and I think be really helpful to continue this work is really how, what kind of spaces could we provide for victim advocacy, which could also maybe, you know, one or two of them on a floor might be able to be renovated instead to a family-friendly childcare-type location. But for for folks awaiting that don't maybe want to be sitting out in the middle of a, of a very busy corridor with a lot of things going on. That was part of the work that Gould Evans did for us in those conversations is, you know, what's possible, what would we like to see? I would really like to explore more of that. Well, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time with the department heads in the building and the judges about how that should be structured, but we should take some time to talk to the public and 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 folks that visited as to what they see. I know, number one, wayfinding and confusion as to where they go is is top of mind. But but there are probably some additional things that we could look at there as well in in terms of how to really prepare for what that courthouse really should look like in the future.
I don't have any other comments.
I really like the idea of childcare there and victim services. I haven't heard that before, and I just like it. Way to go, Commissioner Reed. To your question about timeline for this building, I'm feeling like sooner the better. I just feel like we can't go much longer as long as we've put off the the masonry work that needs to be done. I worry about it. I've seen it, you know, and down to the basement, seen all the issues there. I just feel like we've got we've got to do that. It's not sexy, it's not exciting, but but it needs to be done. And and actually, the the dollar amount for redoing this building doesn't seem to be overly inhibitive. So I I just since you asked where our, where I was, that's sort of where I am. I'd like to get started on this building sooner. I sort of had a question, Sarah, and maybe for Jay about, you know, the last time I had this presentation was pre-pandemic. And we've now learned different things about working spaces, including working from home. How much space people need and things like that, and I just wonder if that's had any impacts on your thinking.
It definitely has on mine, and I do think it's something that before we, you know, I I think it's something that before we would begin any sort of you know, preliminary design or space analysis work. Again, we'd want to really refresh this and talk through some of those things. It's both on people working from home and then the desire for some folks to not want to work in an open office environment. You know, when we had folks who were able to have doors that they could kind of shut and some some separate ventilation systems that that they could work in the office. So I I do think, you know, I I think we're going to need to reevaluate from that perspective. And and frankly, it's probably going to take a little bit of time to sort of have some of those things shake out. I did want to go back to, and I wanted to talk about the north steps, because I also am kind of fascinated by the north steps. And as as you, as the public may not know, obviously, no one enters the north steps. We have very thorny bushes in front of them, and they're very dangerous. But they're an historical part of the building that would need to be preserved. We've actually had conversations with our heritage conservation coordinator about the ability to secure tax credits or perhaps even state preservation dollars specifically for the north steps, you know, because it is really would be done in a way to improve the historic preservation of the structure, since they're not really used anymore. We have worked to hopefully seal up those north doors. I I know at the clerk's office, you used to be able to tell what, you know, how much speed the wind was blowing by what would happen through those north doors. But I think hopefully, we've got a better situation now, but yeah, it's difficult because I think there there are needs in both buildings and and really I think there's a lot more study that has to be done on the courthouse, but that doesn't mean that the need isn't real in terms of the capacity in that space.
My second question. We had a discussion recently about ARPA funds and sustainability and those. And this seems like some of these things seem like a one-time cost. Do you want to weigh in on? I mean, we all want that money to go to a lot of different things and a lot of services, but is there a way to use what we had set aside for capital for some of these one-time costs? And maybe that's just bad thinking, but I'd love to hear our thoughts on that or your thoughts, Sarah.
I I think, you know, I think it would depend on which part of the project. You know, I'm not sure that, like, the exterior renovation work and the basement waterproofing would qualify. But, you know, abilities to create workspaces for you know, a different work environment, and from what I'm seeing in ARPA, that's a possibility that some of those funds could be used. And 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 as we talked about last week, we have a lot more flexibility with ARPA in terms of can we swap out some dollars for other things too as well. I know the courts have seen, you know, the, you know, we've talked about the need for bigger courtrooms where there's more spacing and distancing. We needed it before COVID, but we certainly need it now. And I don't think that's going to change just in terms of that kind of space. So, you know, but that right now is the way that's stacked, that's towards the end of this project. I'm, I'm not sure, given the timeline we're on, we'll meet a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six timeline for that in terms of when we'd have to spend the funds, unless we decided to move really rapidly on this project.
Any additional discussion thoughts?
I I appreciate the opportunity to bring this back to you, and then I just look forward to continued conversations as we continue to move forward. I think once we get additional information about the waterproofing of this building, that'll be a great next step. And then we can just continue to discuss prioritization and and where you see certain things and And we could begin to do some additional analysis on twelve forty two. If that was something the commission wanted to look at, really, because, I mean, the, the blush so that you see in this plan was very, 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 very preliminary in terms of what is possible and and what that would look like at that site. So before we got too set on like you going there first so that we could have it for swing space, I'd want to do a lot more work.
I like that idea. I also wonder if, going back to what Commissioner Kelly said, because that is work that would look at building out some individualized workspaces for offices that we don't have them potentially long term. And that would be more immediate work. That may be an area where we could use ARPA funds to do some of that exploration, even if we won't have all of the work complete by the time we have to expend our funds.
Okay, yeah, that's something I can, we can look in at as staff and just see what's possible there. And then think about that work as as we get the other pieces together. Jay, do you need, have any other questions or anything?
Thank you, Jay, for the presentation. Really appreciate it. So we will just recess until our five thirty business meeting.